Hey, what's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're here with Peter. He third played a tournament. And he turned eight dollar into one thousand six hundred. Tell us about that tournament.
Yeah, so this is a big ten moss that's going on on ACR right now. Uh, and through Evan Jarvis's affiliation with uh with ACR. Uh, we were able to secure a ticket from one of his little competitions. Eight dollars and eighty cents and uh we max late reg this tournament and uh ran pretty good.
Wow, man. So you didn't even pay for this?
No, this is kind of a free roll.
I think yeah, just before Vegas.
Ah, just before we go to Vegas. Yeah. So it's really good.
Pretty nice. All right, let's see. Let's see your moves.
All right.
Here, here, here. So you late ratchet a little bit.
Yeah, we late reg with ten big blinds and the first real hand we pick up is this. We got a limper and let's go. All houses all around.
Plop the house. Hey. Are you gonna defend that?
And it and it ten big blinds, the eight, the ace five who called you, that was like terrible play by him?
Uh, he was a little bit out of line. Like no reason to call, no reason to play after Peter jams.
Yeah, the king jack. Yeah, everything about that seemed terrible from him, but the king jack seemed okay.
Yeah. So that's what I thought, Peter. They're a little bit too short to play four, three offsuit here.
Yeah, it's it's a little call.
Yeah. Okay, okay. You get a four. What are you gonna, what are you gonna do with it?
Well, what do you think? This guy's, this guy's super wide.
Hopefully he is.
Check, check. Hopefully he is.
So check. And then. Okay, let's you get away with it. He didn't double barrel. He on a jack, it would have been a great spot to bet there for him. He's a little bit too wide to, right?
King five off. Yeah, he should be king eight off there and maybe even king nine or king ten with ten big ones.
Is it not king seven?
That well, as you get shorter and shorter like.
King, uh, I'm with king eight, I mean, but.
Yeah.
But king seven. Button. Yeah.
That limbic range.
Um. Against poker is rigged, you just call.
So he's pretty deep here, so he could definitely take some heat. I think I'd probably give this one a squeeze.
Hey. You ever just call?
Um, if he's shorter, I'm gonna call, but he's, he's got, he's got enough chips that he's not really worried about it. Like if he had, if he had twenty-five, I would probably um mix some, some raises in here and some flats, but. Um, once he's this deep, I'm never not three betting him.
Louis, on that chart that you just, that you showed of where the king is your green min raise or is your green limp?
Uh, it was limping.
Wow. So there was a ton of limping at that depth.
Yeah.
Shocking. Okay.
All right, ten big blind button strategy, it gets frisked.
Yeah.
Um. The big blind here, free flow. Okay. So you don't even flat faces. So why is that?
A twenty? A little too deep. Yeah, as you get shallower, you can start plating more stuff.
Can we maybe look at a sim where uh your twenty effective against the big stack? See if that changes anything.
That's not gonna change anything here.
You don't think so? Yeah.
Beginning of the tournament like that, no?
Well, it's like less than fifty percent of the field, but. This is like, this is max, max late reg, right, Peter?
Yeah, we started with ten big blinds.
On ACR too?
This is, this is like.
Four hour?
We're starting with like fifty percent of the field.
Maybe.
Less. Yeah, this tournament started like one in the afternoon and yeah, we jumped in at like four.
I also max late reg this. And I punted it off to a Brazilian.
Okay, open call.
I have an ACR rule, never four bet bluff and I broke my rule. And he had ace king.
But this particular board is a board that I would eat on a lot, but not with this hand.
You wanna have a heart in your hand to bet here, no?
Yeah. Yeah, king high boards are the boards that you're going to be able to bet the most out of position. He's gonna have a lot of three bets that come from king high.
Can even bet this one. And then I'm guessing if you have a heart that raises frequency a little bit. Uh, heart, heart, heart. Okay, yeah.
When it doesn't want to bet, it fades spades diamonds, the ones that block, unlock continues.
Okay, so you hit the five and now you go poor. Uh, it's a bit of a break though.
It is, but we have a lot of checks too.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think in theory, you're supposed to bet like five chips there probably.
Yeah, but like that board is so disconnected, like we're just happy if he can put any chips in the pot.
Right. I mean, after check, check there. Yeah, it's rare that they can call.
Wow. Oh. Now. Do we check raise or do we just call? I think I'm check raising her.
Okay.
What do you guys prefer? Check raise or check call?
I think I'm not gonna check raise the one with it. I'm gonna check raise a lot of their diamond calls.
Never check raise with this one.
Yeah. Yeah, I think like queen eight of diamonds is a better check raise, jack eight.
Okay, so you want like lower stuff.
Yeah, this, this ace is too good.
Yeah.
And then if you, if you look at.
Louis, would you roll, would you roll over that ace eight? Okay, I see it.
It's too good, right? Because you don't really get better aces to fold, whereas what with ace five, ace three, especially ace three. You get a bunch of better aces to fold.
Okay.
So call, yeah, check, check.
Oh.
I wanna see that node. What are you gonna do?
When he, when he makes it eighty percent on the turn or whatever.
And turn goes check, check.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought you wanted to see what happens if he bets.
No, I want to see what happens when this node arrives where it goes check, check, it hit your back door. What are you supposed to do?
Probably checking some huge betting.
I usually bet because I think people check back too much here. They're not gonna thin value bet. They're gonna be overly afraid of the back door or some stuff or I don't bet for it in value enough. But I bet myself, but I'm, I wasn't sure if it's right for this spot at least.
Yeah, like the king's a card he shouldn't check very often. So when he checks it, I think it really turns his hand pretty honest, though I think he's gonna have hard time. Calling more than a seventy-five percent pot bet here. So if I bet, I don't think I'm gonna bet very big.
After check, check, you bet every diamonds. Cool to see. You go big, does it go that way?
And I think that's probably a mistake.
No, no, no. Look at this.
Well, not in theory, but like Peter saying like. Guys kinda capped it in reality.
Yeah, I think like that's six chips, he's gonna find a call with a ten or a six occasionally.
Yeah, but I think if you wanna do that, you wanna be able to pull the same bluff with just the ace of diamonds, right?
Oh, yeah, well, you'll notice that that, that overpot that on the river is a bluff size that's very common in this tournament.
Yeah.
That it's common. I promise I don't, I just don't have nuts every, every hand.
Okay. Two big lines. Oh.
So I almost folded here, but I thought maybe this guy just misclicked.
I always talk myself into calling because I, I think he missed like.
That's also a very, very ACR play.
Huh.
He misclicked, that's for sure.
Oh.
Kings are no good, sir. Sorry.
Take your aces and shove them. We flop the wheel.
Yeah. Okay, that was funny. Check, check. Pretty big bet call, we're out of here. Good night, good luck. Two. Just like, um. Always calling.
So this one's pretty narrow, like I, I, I think about with. This specific diamond combo here, maybe folding sometimes. Because ace high words, we don't fully defend, but this guy's the button and he's super wide, so.
Yeah, I don't think you can fold here.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, Peter. No backdoor, nothing feels, feels a little bad, but then.
Then he just checks.
Come on.
Yeah, I know. I would call it, I would call.
Uh, now I think we go pop. Check, check on the turn. Two pairs. Yep. I'm going five. Like eighty percent five.
Do you ever put this into your block-ish size range? As like a, a protective measure type of deal?
Um, my blocks are probably gonna come from um. Stronger hands like straights here or better two pairs. Particularly ten X. That unblock him having an ace that he wants to go for thin value on the river here.
And then. With the two pairs, do you, if you get raised, you call all you two pairs?
If you, if you set them up as a block, yeah.
Okay.
Particularly like when you're betting, you know, ten, six or ten, five. Or your ten, four. Those are the ones I'm probably gonna block more.
I guess it's nice to have a five.
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
If I have an ace, I'm just gonna bet big.
Not blocking very much, very surprising. Why is that?
Bet is orange and brown.
Yeah.
We're checking it, we're checking it.
We're checking it. Yeah, gallon messed up my colors.
These are beautiful colors. Thank you.
The, the thirty-five and the fifty-nine are the same color.
Thank you.
All right, Scotty, we're hiring uh color architects for our software. If you're interested to.
My, you know, my wife did the color, was the color coordinator on Back to the Future, so.
Oh. Great Scott.
Yeah, so.
Pretty cool.
Just pull out enough to win.
Why do you guys think we don't block that two pair here? We block that.
Well, look at our range, we're not block betting anything. Well, I guess the thirty-five, uh, it's more thin value than block.
And deuce blocks sometimes.
It's blocking and read them. Why is it betting at ten but not two pair?
I guess it protects your betting range.
Yeah, I see kind of the same pattern you see usually when the turn goes check, check. You know, the way you structure your range, your best top pair been big. Weak top pair, but small, second pair, but small. But I thought. A two pair with that like that, with that small as well, no?
No, it's mostly checking.
We don't have ten, six, ten, four is a bad thing.
It's just our worst uh bottom two, so it's uh going, going into the check range to uh.
Five, four.
Hmm.
Five, four blocks, ace, five.
I guess we gotta keep one to protect that checking range, right?
Yeah, like say, say he bets, are we check raising it?
Good question.
I would hope so.
No, I doubt it.
Uh, he bets, always gonna bet big, sixty percent.
Yeah.
A little bit, yeah.
Mainly not.
Mostly.
Uh.
Cause this one is just not here, I think. Hold on, it's here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're gonna mix and then. Pretty, pretty sweet. But we planted check raise, okay?
Who's the noodler is this um?
Eater.
Yeah, Peters.
Oh, this is your run from last night now?
Yeah.
Good, good, good. Congratulations, by the way. That's a big field.
Thanks. Would you get Pete? A fourth for sixteen hundred and a eight eighty.
I think this is a spot where I fold.
Um, yeah, well.
Ace sideboard against CP, you don't peel with the bottom there.
Ace and king two, right? Like it's not just one or the other, it's both.
The most, right? Yeah.
I think solver is gonna mix, but yeah, it is gold.
You call here sometimes, I think the machine calls.
I think machine will call a little bit.
They're called like seven, eight.
Because of the, the blocker?
Yeah, if you, I don't wanna hit a ten really.
Oh, it's a bold, look at this.
Yeah, if you have the seven of diamonds, maybe you call here, but.
Yeah. We have a clear pattern here.
Yeah, I just.
Again, CP, ace sideboard, you way over fold.
And king high boards too.
Hmm.
Little steel. Little steel.
Hmm. Guys in.
So here's an interesting one, dry side pots. Like I'm not beating the guy who's all in all the time here, so I'm just checking down. Is this a mistake?
Well, you don't tackle any sides at all. But it's your best team, so.
Yeah.
It does depend on the stage of the tournament though, too.
What's up, Joey?
Hmm. Like if you're near the bubble or. Where people make more sense than you, check it down.
We're past the freezeout, but still along, you know, a fair ways from the bubble.
Yeah, I don't think you're too incentivized to uh try to bet the other guy out. This, this wasn't a PKO if I, if I remember correctly, so like.
Oh, and he stepped in front of the line. He started with eight big blind.
Peter, I am very proud of you. Congratulations.
Can you believe that?
For seeing the light. I mean, who needs to wait in lines when you can just skip lines?
I don't know about that. I'm very conflicted. Oh, Peter, the king was coming. Can you call here? No, not really, right?
Yeah, like, I mean, when it goes check, check on the flop, like sometimes the guy is deuce. Right? If I had queen jack, probably I call here. But king, queen, I let go.
Feel like queen jack is more of a letdown than king queen.
Well, you can hit the ten, the queen or the jack, so.
Okay.
Yeah, the sexy shen have been betting.
Okay, I'll take that. Oh, we get chips now.
Yeah.
I won big blind. Well, yeah, I like that. Oh, we gotta call. Uh-huh. But that's funny, cause. When he picks up the aggression and he checks, to me, it's always like he has nothing, so you can just like check back, we're gonna win. That's a bad river.
No. We, yeah, we got noodled, but did we really get noodled?
Oh.
I would just fold flop.
It's probably a theory fold, but.
Problem is you're playing for half pot.
What?
Hmm.
Oh.
I don't think it's a call. Don't think it's a call here.
Yeah, I don't think it's a call either.
It's just a bad river. Gotta let it go. But if the river doesn't come spade, I'm calling a bet for sure.
Sure.
Hmm, ten, nine here.
Can we see that one?
What do you wanna see?
I wanna see the flop.
The flop, the one, no?
I wanna see if we continue. I feel like we have way better continues, but maybe I'm tripping.
He, he check where he says.
You got a pair, man.
We got an under pair and an underspade.
It's not an underspade, it's the, the fine tree of spade here.
The underspade.
It's not an underspade.
I don't know, man. They're not check raising jack ten of diamonds here in these games.
Huh? Why not?
I don't know, you gotta ask them.
Good response, Danny. Good response.
No, you shouldn't check raise jack ten of diamonds. You should be check raising sets of five, sets of sevens. Jacks and queens with a spade.
All of which you're basically drawing dead verse. Is what Danny's saying.
Yeah.
Hello, from the big blind, um.
And seven.
Isn't it the small play in the cold?
No, there's no small blind.
Okay.
Check.
One chip. One point two.
See this?
Hello?
Got a little bets.
I would check back a lot here too, yeah.
You would check back, some majority range bet. You're checking back fifteen percent of the time now.
Yeah, but our hand checks back a lot.
We.
This re, this region makes sense to check back a reasonable amount. It's not the craziest thing. Especially when he has a spade, right? It could take half the time.
We just wanna showdown.
Don't miss a range bet here.
So there's like forty percent checking. Checking or betting is fine here.
Anyway.
Yeah, now.
You're not sure about if we call the raise, right?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, you do with the spade.
And look at it, ninety-four chips, like it's not even.
So what if you were, that's percentage wise, but uh if you were going to raise larger. What's it do versus the fifty-five sizing?
Hey.
Still calls, it's just not quite as strong in ED.
Point four is pretty heavy, right?
It's, I think it's not the craziest thing.
And then just like close our eyes and call. Or just like hope he gives up or like.
Any merit in folding here, they've given there's like slightly above average size and we're slightly towards the bottom of the range.
Absolutely not. This is like a great hand.
Your favorite hand, right?
Can we, he's ever called the river?
I'm offended that you even proposed that.
I know.
Louis, since you got to put this threes in, can we take them to the river?
Hey, what do you wanna see here?
Just so it, the spade come, when the last spade comes in and he bets half pot, it's, I thought that was a pure fold.
Yeah, probably, probably is a pure fold.
Change the size back to thirty-three if you're gonna do it, yeah.
Uh, well, he just calls, right?
No, no.
We call. Burnways, king of spades. Then uh nine of spades. Check, check.
Deck and we.
Then he bets sixty percent pot. Are these just aren't here anymore?
Is that because we bet, did we bet them on the turn?
We must have.
He checks.
Nope, nope, to the right, Louis. The cutoff note on the turn.
Yeah.
That one.
Ah, the bet.
We bet on, but we still have some left over.
Yeah, there should be some.
Be a tiny bit, yeah.
Oh, you put the river in wrong. It's the big blind betting. There you go. Now we can see.
Recording in progress.
I want to raise.
No.
Uh.
So dirty.
It never call, it, it never folds.
Never calls, always raises.
It never folds.
Yeah, it got counterfeit, so.
Oh.
It's not happy.
Yeah, Peter, you should have jammed and been out right there.
Oh, Danny, don't be so results oriented.
No, I think bluffing with the underspade makes a ton of sense.
Okay, so we get a pair board, king eye, not great for our imposition calling range. Do we see that?
Hmm, I think eights are actually probably asymmetrically better for you than it is for him.
Yeah, but it's a king eye board, so they're all better for him.
I, I don't hate c-betting here, so.
King is good for him, eight is good for us, is kind of how I look at it.
Oh, he's under the gun, right, right?
How is the eight good for your calling range on the button?
Well, Louis, I'll make it, I'll make it simplified for you. When you call, you, you have more eights than he's raising from under the gun. Which would make it asymmetrically good for us.
He has ace, king, eight, nine, eight? Probably not seven, eight anymore at this phase in theory.
Yeah, probably something like that.
And what do we have? Ten, eight, nine, eight, ace, eight. Do we have king eight?
I don't feel like we're that strong with eight.
Nobody has offsuit.
No off suits, barely any suited.
Take a look at his, his eights though. Free one.
This is chippy V, it's gonna be a little.
A little different.
He has uh the same as, same amount as us.
No seven, eight for him.
And we, we also do have a little king eight, queen eight, or I'm sorry, um, jack eight, queen eight.
Yeah, we have.
Similar.
So we have a little more.
We have a little more eights.
Pretty similar.
Thought we're capped on the gangs, ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys got lucky today.
What happened, Ken?
My mic's been muted.
Running hot.
You've probably been over there thinking like, man, these guys are just talking over me, losing my mind.
I'm not, I honestly only made one small comment earlier. I was just kidding.
It wouldn't be a good hand review if you didn't bust my balls a few times, Ken.
So do we bet the better spades, check the worse ones or vice versa? What do we think? Uh. Or neither?
That's a lot of bandwidth and RAM to work with there, Danny, right now. So you could bet a, you can, you can bet a, you can check it. So you could bet it, you can, you can bet it, you can check it. Checking is, uh, pretty good.
Louis, show us just the spades.
To answer Danny's question.
Makes him perfecty.
Yeah, it looks like it's just, it's actually like. Low ace, high heavy, if you wanted to tilt your range into one way or the other.
And it's more, it's low ace, high heavy, but and it's more aces than anything else.
Yeah, it's aces, the overcard to the king that gives you immediate turn value.
Yeah, ace, ten's about the same as queen ten, which is about the same as jack ten. You see it kind of propagate through jacks and nines as well. There, there is a little bit of increase in frequency with the, with the nine X.
Cool.
So check, check, this is definitely good. So what do we do now? Does he check again?
Yeah, he checked.
You gotta go small, I think. I don't think he had to do anything else.
Yeah, yeah. Small bet, probably good.
I think it's too big. But, I mean.
This is the size that I would want my bluff to be.
So what kind of bluffs do we have when we do check, check, flop, bet small turn, bet big river? Like the over bet river.
Naked ace of spades.
Okay, I mean, that's not a horrible answer. I just don't know how. I was gonna say, we don't have a ton of offsuit ace X is my only, my only retort to that.
Actually, I think this board might be one where we have split sizings.
Yeah, I do too. I do too, Joe.
Where full houses are gonna be over pot, but flushes are gonna be a little bit under pot.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Joey. I think like this might get slotted into like a more seventy-ish G O kind of sizing.
Take a look.
Mm-hmm. When we have more nuts than that, we can't overbet, right?
Do we have more nuts than those?
Well, we have more eight probably, right?
Yeah, but they, they've got, they've got full houses, they've got equal flushes.
Yeah, yeah.
Flushes are there, so.
Well, actually, the, with the king on board, it blocks a bunch of.
Some of them, it does block up, it does block, block a slop of their flushes, you're right.
Right.
We're gonna have slightly more flushes and more eights.
Plus, don't you think that was a weird line for them to take with a full house?
I would, I would agree with that. So what are we doing here? So it does wanna go big and it does wanna go, is that over? That is over.
Let's say one hundred and fifty percent.
So what did you do on the turn? So you went check, check. Bet thirty. And then he goes big, and with the full houses, it actually goes even big, bigger.
This, this, by the way, is why I would really love to get into some of that toy game work, cuz I don't totally get the concept, cuz I haven't looked at it much, but. This was kind of something I just thought about from the toy game is. We both can have some nuts, but we have, I think, more nuts here, and that lets you overbet.
Yeah, pretty interesting this work. I, I, I guess what I find interesting is he took a double check line with a king here.
That's not what the third game is about, Ken.
What's this?
It's not about what the third game is about.
He, he, he didn't further define it, like what he's talking about is like the BBC implementation, like the applied toy game stuff that they're doing.
Yeah, first river simplification.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But, uh, yeah, good hand, this is good. I like calling here. I don't like three betting versus a guy who's got thirty-five or whatever. Yeah, probably good. Better for your calls than his raises.
You think? You don't have a club?
I think it's probably fine. You got two overs.
Hmm.
And a backdoor straight.
Mm-hmm.
Two backdoor straights.
We in the money yet, Pete? Do you think?
Okay.
Uh, not quite, close.
And it's, it's even more of a bet, honestly, if he's, if he's like approaching the money bubble with these kind of chips versus these middling stacks.
Uh, the weed blast?
I go pocket control now personally.
We can see P, right? Four big lines, five big lines?
What do you do if he jams?
Well, you gotta check. Yeah, this S P R.
So wait, so what you're saying is you're just gonna punt it off if he jams? That's a nice way of saying it.
Are you folding?
I'm checking to avoid that scenario.
So, I don't think he gets here with quite as many kings as aces.
Mm-hmm.
So I think the king is still a card that I'm gonna bet here.
Okay. What do you, what do you do, Pete? What do you do, Pete, if he jams?
If he jams, hold.
So you bet, you bet he jams, you fold, or just raises. It doesn't even have to be a jam, I guess.
Well, that's, that's a different.
Okay, well, what do you do?
Uh, depends how big he raises.
Standard.
Three X?
Looks.
Probably gonna fold.
Okay.
They like, this is a, this is an unexpectedly strong. Um, hand all of a sudden.
Check it back.
You get torched. So does it like betting? Does it like betting the hijack?
It does a little bit.
A little bit. It's not the craziest thing. It actually prefers. What did it prefer?
It only, it was. Falling the raise, man, that's what I thought.
You just looked at a raise a second ago where it was like folding everything.
Yeah, yeah, but they're big rings. And it's never using it. Like it's betting small here, right? Thirty-three percent. And then it's, so I, I would, I thought it was going polar here. But it's not going polar with this one. So the way it protects it. It's gonna use polar size with other top of hand, which. Like better kings. And then.
Yeah, we just wanna get caught by like ace of clubs, jack. Queen, jack, jack of clubs.
Hmm.
So it's protecting itself by betting small instead of polar rising.
Yeah, I, I could, I could get behind small, small, and then if you get raised, what's the primary racing frequencies?
Uh, the primarily, it's a small. And then it's a small raise, you'd never fold a king ten.
Mm-hmm.
And then he doesn't have much all in, has a bigger size.
See, this is kind of like scary territory. Alright, so like, I think like the eight, the, the naked ace of club stuff makes a lot of sense. But I, I start to wonder, like, if he's not filling in some of those other raises, do you still continue with hands like that?
We did check back and we get kind of a disaster, but.
I think it's probably fine. I, I, I mean, you can just check it back. Yeah.
Might have missed.
I'm with you, Galen. It would be scary. Even if I have a small flush and get raised there, I'm like, oh.
Did you open limp?
There we go.
Miss click, miss click.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of limp ace jack from seventy big blinds under the gun in my strategy.
King jack, but still.
Yeah.
Ooh, it's judgment night.
Not judgment day.
Are you gonna four bet?
Are we still, um, not in the money? Do you remember?
You know, this is pretty close. These guys are getting short.
I look at your three bet, when it's tiny, tiny number, I fold.
If it's a, if it's not in the money and this guy's three betting you, I honestly might just fold this. Like, what is this guy thinking?
Bought this last night in a fifty dollar buy-in. Guy, guy squeezed three bet, we had a three bet of four, I'm, I'm in the big blind with ace queen with like eighteen bigs, I folded.
Yes, right, good fold.
Or betting here?
Four betting.
Alright, and for bubble?
Seems like.
I don't know.
Seems crazy to me.
So, this is a, this is a thirty-four hundred person tournament. The bubble went past like pretty quick. We weren't on the bubble for very long.
I see. So you don't really, it's hard to estimate is what you're saying. So you don't know if this could be like before, after, or whatever. So like, if it's before the bubble, I'm probably gonna be way more cautious here. But if it's after the bubble, I'm kind of like with Louis, like whatever, just put it in. I mean, you can point, you can point at the chippy V stats and solution all you want, but it's like, we're talking about other characteristics, right?
Yeah, if he has a reasonable three bet, I'm sticking it in every time.
Oh, ace five here sometimes.
If we're after the bubble and he's Russian or Brazilian or has a three bet eight or higher, I'm all in.
Yeah, uh, see you later.
Yeah, I think eight or higher is definitely, uh, is getting jammed no matter where they're from.
Yeah, that was the, the third or condition. Any of those will do.
It's a good call. You gotta continue, I think, when you pick up the equity.
You don't have a club.
Need a club, I would fold. He's short.
Really? You got, I, you got over a gut shot?
It's a three bet pot, you're the caller in it, it's a king I board.
Block bluffs, blah, blah, blah.
Connects it pretty, connects with it pretty well, no?
Your over could be easily dead against ace king.
If we had one club, I say we continue.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have enough king X and ten X to defend with pairs.
Man, maybe I'm just, maybe this is why I overfold pre-flop, cuz I'm probably overly sticky post-flop.
Louis, if it was Jack Lolo, would you fold to this size?
Alright, so it is calling.
Cuz this is even better than Jack Lolo. We have more outs here. We have seven outs.
We'll have less pairs on Jack Lolo.
So also, like, what size did you, what size did you give him? Twenty-five percent, which is like. Three point, well, three point whatever, so, yeah, I mean, this is pretty close, right?
So majority fold, but if you have, I think the club in your hand becomes full frequency call.
Uh, I would agree with that. I would definitely agree with that. We're seeing, we're seeing something else there. Oh, it's a different range, I see. Yeah, you just put it in, actually.
Yeah, club stop. Everything else mix.
Yeah, more like putting it in here, or.
Now, now you're, uh, so I'm curious how we proceed. I mean, you just fold if he jams, if he stuffs turn.
And he's gonna check back his under pairs, and he checks.
Put it in, put it in.
So do you?
No, 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 no. It went check, check, turn.
It's not your special node where you check with the nuts and then they go all in every time?
I checked with the nuts later.
Yeah, that would be, that would be, uh, bet, bet nodes. This is bet-check node.
You keep that for later. No, look at Peter.
Yeah, I would stuff. He's not gonna bluff. He's gonna have an under pair a lot here, ace, jack.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's gonna show you like, yeah, I think checking there kind of lets him off the hook after he plays check on the turn.
It'd be pretty hard for him to call, though. But I don't.
It's really, I was gonna say, it's really easy for him to check, though.
Yep.
He jams, it's just jack, jack.
So jam better than betting small? I think so on the river in that spot.
I like the call a lot. Oh?
Jack.
Could bet like.
Jack. This is a checker. This is a checker.
Uh, on the previous hand.
How do you spot a check like that?
Well, he's the aggressor.
He got flop and turn, right?
He's got continuous aggression and he's the aggressor. It's very easy.
Hmm.
Equity sure hasn't shifted at any point in favor.
Well, if you're the aggressor in the hand, and then all of a sudden your opponent bets big on the river, doesn't that ring, ring alarm bells?
Yeah.
Especially on a brick, like the six, what does the six do for the small blinds range, like?
Nothing.
I'm praying that this guy has pocket.
Wait. Oh, okay, okay, you did jam. I, it's, it went quick, so I, it just looked like you called. Yeah, see, like he had a bluff and you captured way more value from a bluff than like if you would have, you would have dog jammed or something like that.
Aw.
Yeah, this seems like a pretty.
Oh, wait, hold on, that guy min raised. Uh, yeah, still gotta call, right?
I would just call.
Do you ever make it twenty-four?
Oh, wait, I didn't see the min raise. Ooh, this is actually, this is actually, uh, this is a.
Went through the same thing as me, huh?
Yeah, I'm just a little lag time there, Danny. Give me a second, need another cup of coffee.
Notice who's in the big blind here?
Uh, craw, craw daddy, but it looks like croft daddy.
Yeah, it looks like it. I thought it too.
It ain't croft daddy, it's craw daddy.
Crow daddy. Uh, this, I honestly, I think I would call here. Um, it's too strong to fold and you could be spewing if you just pile it in versus fifty big blinds.
What do you do with pocket nines here?
Same.
Nine's I might fold to B H.
Yeah, is there a? Is there a pair you fold?
I'm calling maybe eights through jacks here, and then like I'm more committed on the top end past that. I don't know, something like that is what I would do.
I, I made a pact with myself a while ago. I never cold call a three bets.
I agree.
What the, but.
It's, it's for better.
You can't just blanket have that, like, this is.
Yeah, that's. Hey, so let me ask, okay, so.
I don't know where to start with that.
So my only question with that is, and I mean, I don't hate that, it's not like the craziest thing I've heard. Like, I mean, I mean, it's very conventional wisdom that, you know, cold calling is not really a big thing, but what do you do now if under the gun five bet jams in your face?
It's easy, you fall, you gotta.
Calling now, you committed yourself.
Right, so like, you, you've kind of pigeonholed yourself into a range that, um, you're not really competitive with.
And this also isn't just a standard three bet where he went to five or six. He shoved to twelve.
I don't see anything wrong with folding tens here.
I would play call fold here for sure.
Yeah, again, under the gun, I'm good, probably gonna fold nines or worse. This is probably the worst hand that I'm four betting.
If you're four betting, your size is just gonna be all in here, I think, though. I, I prefer a call here as well.
So no one likes clicking, cuz that was my first idea.
Alright, so what's the advantage of clicking over jamming?
Well.
You fold to the jam.
Are you gonna fold to that jam when there's only like another twenty big blinds, twenty-three big blinds?
Feels like it's a big.
The only reason to do it. The only reason to, to click and not jam is to fold to a jam.
Well, that, it was, it was a loaded question. Yeah, well, that, that's fair. It was a loaded question, Scotty, to be fair.
You call aces here too.
Yeah, I would call aces here as well.
The jam is large enough that you don't need a click sizing here. Like, if the jam was seven digs, then I could understand clicking it to twelve. But because it's already twelve, they're like. It's not like Alian is just gonna overcall, right? He's all in or fold, unless he's being weird.
I don't think it's nitty to stay out of tough spots like this, when you've got a big stack. There's no reason to gamble here. You don't.
Um, I'm kind of, I honestly, like, I definitely lean towards what Kelly's saying there, um. You know, I could, uh.
Pocket nine.
But I've been playing live for a week and that's Nit City, so I don't know.
I'm folding pocket nines in this spot, uh, pretty quickly. Yeah.
And then fans like that, you kind of have to play. You guys don't like the click.
Well, I'm just, I, it's not that we don't like the click. I'm just trying to understand, from your perspective, what is the advantage of clicking?
I think clicking mathematically puts you in a bad spot.
I do too, Kelly.
I hate the click.
I hate to click. I let Louis answer.
If you just call, you make it kind of.
Kind of what?
Uh, he can shove onto you and then you're in that tough spot.
Not really. It's very easy. It's very easy. You just fold.
You just lost twelve big blinds and get out.
Can we look for a sim? Yeah, can we look for a sim twenty-five percent field? Perhaps.
I don't think they're gonna find anything here.
I don't think Sim's gonna help you here. I think this is, I think this is one of those spots where. You just stay out of trouble. You're, I mean, is this final table? By the way, it is. I, I got here late. Is this final table?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, 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 okay. Well, that's different then.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think folding is actually reasonable, but I think I still call this hand, but I can't get by to fold. I, to me, there's no point in click. Yeah, I think folding is actually reasonable, but I think I still call this hand, but I can't buy to fold. I, to me, there's no point in clicking. Um, you might as well be jamming if you're clicking.
Is this a bounty, by the way?
No bounty, no bounty.
Okay. We used to jacks.
And you're behind anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Just turned out, I mean.
Uh, I'm folding.
I'm folding here as well, but what do you call with here, Ace Jack?
Ace Jack even feels bad, man.
I think it depends on the player.
I think Ace Jack is gonna run, right?
Okay, I fold versus some players and I call versus others, but I think like, I think ace queen is the minimal. Must go with kinda hand. Like I, ace queen, I'm just never folding. Ace Jack suited is questionable.
I might be in there with Ace Jack suited.
Yeah, I'm kinda with.
Yeah, I agree.
She wants to call this one, so.
I think Ace.
What's the jamming range?
And then you see ace king. Or kings.
You gotta look at the jamming range cuz that makes it important. So are they jamming all of this? That's, that's the only question.
Probably. Maybe not all. But probably most of it.
Ace three suited, five sometimes, six is a lot, sevens a lot.
Yeah, that's easy to find, no?
Verse, what is this, low jack?
That is, it's Kelly on the button.
No, it's not.
It is.
If it was me, you need to call.
Exactly. Oh.
Yeah, this is, this is good. Yeah. Caught speeding, caught speeding. Ooh, okay, this is hard.
Think this is hard. You should see.
I would have to see the stats, man. Like I, I'm not happy in this spot. Yeah.
What are you not happy about?
The problem is, i- if you're against Jack, Jack or Queen, Queen, one, at least one of your ace or kings is dead with next stop. He has one.
That's kind of the issue, right?
Yeah, it's even, it's even worse.
The guy's a small nine, so he's the widest, so.
He should be wide. He should be wide, but this is why I would wanna look. Do you have HUD stats, Louis?
I talked about this for a while, but I'm probably calling. It's cuz I'm a.
Uh, it's prob- probably only in uh, Peter's database.
You're right, it's probably only in Peters.
Nothing.
Yeah, I mean, it just.
I mean, I'm not calling, I'm shoving, but you know.
You covered two aces, you gotta rumble, no?
I feel like it's a, it's a break even call, is what I'm gonna, is what I'm gonna guess.
Yeah, but this guy could be out of line and this guy could be taking advantage of this guy out of line and the late position open.
Yeah, we're also in an eight dollar tournament here, so I mean, you're drawing some pretty high level uh.
He could have a Jack, right? He could have a ten. As you say.
He could have a pair of deuces.
We're not happy against a pair of deuces.
So we.
We're very unhappy against a pair of deuces.
I agree.
We put it back in the face and next stop ran his entire time bank trying to figure out what to do.
Yeah, man, probably not very happy. Like, I don't hate this. And um, if I open like EP, if I was like under the gun or under the gun one and this happened, I would probably fold, but I think because you're in late position. I mean, justifying a call, I think is pretty good, but. Yeah, this kinda feels bad to be honest. Like, do you really wanna be gambling sixty percent of your chips here?
I break my wrist calling.
Ace Jack.
Yeah.
Does have the ace jack.
Like, I can't call quick enough.
And he always flops the jack here.
You're just, you're ahead of both ranges, so. And this kind of highlights it, right? This guy ripped an ace jack off for forty bigs, like that's, and small blind could have anything still.
What a fade.
And that guy had an ace of clubs.
Save the deck. Let's go.
So what's the four bet range look like there in the uh, the sim? Just a chippy V scenario?
You wanna say machine?
I'm, I'm kinda curious, like how much it's.
This one.
A machine, I don't think is gonna shove Ace Jack off suit very often.
That's, that's kinda what I'm getting at.
You don't think so?
It does.
It does. Yeah, yeah, we've looked at that before, right?
I think it's the worst hand.
I haven't looked.
ASAP.
I haven't looked up, so I'm not sure.
With that small blind is.
Jack suited.
Okay.
Forty is a forty bigs, not fifty.
No, 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 it's fifty affected with a small blind.
Uh, but he's forty there.
Okay, so last, okay, yeah, like, I figured it would be.
He does it.
So, put us in the under the gun now, just out of curiosity, and make small blind, big blind jam, and let's see how like.
Well, small blind, three bet.
Okay, yeah, versus this, I'm probably folding as well.
Yeah, 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 that's where I'm at. Okay, so now it's like break even.
Yeah, point oh two chips, mixing ace king off with a fold.
Alright, alright, so yeah, this is, this is kinda where I'm at, like mentally, so that, that's feels alright.
But you gotta think about like how different the big blinds jamming.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's why I'm not happy with it, because like you have to draw some assumptions about the player. Um, when you're talking about four bet ranges.
Yeah, but let's be honest here, on this network, do you think he's gonna be overly tight or overly?
I think I, I think I've heard thing, somebody in the past say, it is quite silly to draw, drawing assumptions. This is my best French words. This is my best French words. Quite silly to be drawing assumptions about things like this. About people we don't know.
I mean, I think when we don't know, we just try to blade GTO, which in this case is an easy call.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, you have the added component of the stats, but yeah, I agree, Nick. Like you, you, you fall back on what you know.
So you don't think we can draw a population in line here?
Alright, so what's the population assumption that the entire network is doing what?
A bit too wide on ACR, pre-flop?
You think they're bit wide?
Yeah.
Compared to what? Compared to like what GTO is?
Too passive.
I would say too passive.
Other networks?
I think they're actually tighter than other networks.
I'll put it this way, I don't think Zaki is folding tens here. I'm a little worried about the small blind personally. He made a, a huge three bet, like that is larger than you would normally see. For me, that's like.
That is kind of like.
I don't know.
What was the sizing?
Okay, nine point seven. Do you think like the recreational player is gonna be overly tight here or overly wide?
Overly tight.
I think it, I think it uh, kinda converges on both poles. So I think you got crazy people who are just gonna be maniacal and be way, way, way too wide. And then I think you have naturally tighter players who are just gonna be overly tight. That's why like relying on the HUD and like the stats and things, I think kinda really makes a, makes a difference.
Okay, so here's my assumption. Anyone that plays a little bit of poker will get out of the way from the big blind here, when he sees that.
No, not necessarily. I, people, I, I feel like a lot of recreational players get attached to nice hands, so they'll just like call here with like king jack suited or something.
Yeah, but good players, good players will tend to get away from this.
What do you think population is doing with Jack, Jack there?
Uh, it's a mix between jamming and cold calling.
Yeah, it's, it's playing for sure. That's what I'm, anyway.
Yeah.
But you have to assume this guy's a recreational, that I'm not studied.
Yeah, well, see.
So what do you think about next stop? If, if this is the question with our ace king, what do you think about next stop's call with ace king there?
Oh dude, I'm not a fan of that. Um, after you call, and the other guy calls, I'm folding. I, I'm, if I'm next stop, I, I think I'm out of there. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Um, I think it's probably a call and a solver. It's just miserable.
I don't know, I'm just reading the name Mad Blue Nudler and I'll never fold this thing.
Next stop is a world of hurt, if his mind is, whenever is it my turn, has a bear.
I think you could count on one hand how many times I've pulled today's king in an eight dollar tournament.
Well, fair enough, fair enough.
See that or not see that? Here again, this small line.
Uh, fi- five, six, do we have hearts? We do have backdoor heart straights. I kinda like betting.
He kinda like betting, X guy.
Yeah, just coffee right now, no eggs.
We, we can hear it.
That's smaller bet half, that's sixty.
Oh, sixty big blinds deep. I like checking here. Um, because my range is gonna wanna bet big when it bets.
I got him.
I think we still have some small.
Okay, flap.
I don't know. I must.
I uh, I was gonna say, I like betting a lot. I, I, I don't think I would go too big, though.
Just a clean eye border in position. Thank you.
Uh, for what it's worth, I think this guy sound of silence is actually a reasonable player.
I think Peter overly respects the small blind ranges. Am I wrong?
Uh, what did he say with regards to?
I, I just think he checks too much against the small blind.
Peter, Pleader likes playing uh, pretty close to the vest with some things. I think, I've noticed in the past, he plays check in a lot of spots where I would not be playing check.
Yeah.
That five, six.
And that's okay, you know, like.
Because we're so deep, Peter, it's, I feel like it's hard for him to check raise a queen, jack, queen ten type of hand as often.
And honestly, even if you do get check raised, it doesn't really matter. This hand holds up to the heat reasonably well.
Like we bet like uh.
Quite a bit. I mean, we're not like ordering a Happy Meal at McDonald's, but.
Seventy-five percent of the board too.
I'm definitely gonna hit up the dollar menu.
Yeah, seventy-five percent of the board.
How do we, how do we bet? What about this specific, specific board across all?
I just got that, Gail. This specific board?
Yeah, not the specific hand, the specific board.
Wait just a second, I gotta go to McDonald's now, I'm hungry.
This board was being about seventy percent bet, thirty percent bet.
Okay.
I think it's the double Broadway boards versus small blind that we're more cautious, but I could be wrong.
Honestly, I think uh, EP probably plays very similar, small blind and big blind. I think you start seeing the diverging behaviors happen when you're in later position.
Oh, small blind's got a lot of flushes and sets here.
Yeah.
McQueen I born, we majority bet here. Bet small, polarizing that turn, a flush complete.
I, I honestly, I'm not really a huge fan of this, just because the flush does complete, straight's kind of complete, um. I think this eight of clubs is just not great for our hand here, and if you're targeting folds, I think like. Maybe a little barrel will probably get the job done.
Also feels like you're trying to overbet left, right, up and down.
Which is good. I think finding really polarizing spots is good. I just don't think this is it.
Yeah, this is not.
The, the, the flush is gonna make you behave.
Like I said.
A weird double belly buster here.
Peter, you got one club in your hand, one club.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I could, I could get more behind that.
He's got tons of flushes here.
The problem is uh, you don't have, you're not gonna find this hand offsuit from this position.
King ten off with the ten of clubs.
Yeah, man, you could probably do some shenanigans with a hand like that.
It's worth mentioning, a small blind, super weighted tour and suited stuff. Right.
Oh yeah, I think the uh, the flush is gonna make you behave. You're not gonna get to go kinda like bananas.
Alright, let's take a look.
And we block, and we block his backdoor, continue.
So you do have some eighty-three working a little bit in there, but I would almost wager that it's gotta, you gotta have to have a club to be playing with that.
Yeah, so you're not overbetting, you're not even using eighty percent beat.
If you were the small blind here.
Something like that.
So what is the king ten? Uh, explore the king ten proposal that we were talking about, the offsuit one. Like if you have like a club. Not even, right?
Ah, see, I thought that, I saw, I thought that ten of club would do it, but it's actually the king of clubs. King of clubs is doing it every time.
But what's.
Louis, can you click the small blind when we're done?
Yeah, what, what do you want for the small line? After we bet?
No, no, I wanna see if, if he was gonna bet turn, what are his sizings like? Cuz I think he gets to have overbetting here. A little bit.
Uh, I think the flush makes him behave too, honestly, like um. If it was, if it was eight of hearts.
Flop goes check, check, the flush completes, so he has some leads. Because he just needs to structure, like he needs to bet the queens after the flop goes check, check, right?
And he does have some polar components to what you were saying, Danny. Like, there is some one twenty-five in here.
I missed the flop check, so he's still pretty wide on the small blind.
Yeah. Nine is a combo that does pick the size up here.
Mm-hmm. Um, I'm folding this.
I think this is a call, GTO.
I think it's probably a GTO call also, but it's just, you're kinda like middle position, firstly, position. I just, this is like.
Feels like a pretty easy fold to me.
I fold these a lot, and I know it's not GTO, but.
What are you doing? Why are you?
Cuz it's GTO.
This is, this is a strong enough hand in position.
Yeah, this is one of your defending hands.
Yeah, but you're out of position, Pete.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still a strong enough hand. Like, we're sixty bigs deep, we're playing for, we're playing for straights and flushes.
When you say.
This is an auto call.
Where, where do you gauge it in your range? Is it middle of your range? Is it bottom of your range?
Oh, you're suited gappers? You're probably not gonna go much lower than this, like.
So you're at the bottom of your range, right, Pete?
Um, pretty close, like maybe ten eight, I'm gonna call here.
So you, you're at the floor, right? Why do you think you need to defend the floor against a guy who doesn't bluff enough?
So this is that next stop guy who saw us four bet jam that ace king. This is, like, this is the same guy we played that pot with. So uh, he's seen us be pretty aggressive with hands before.
You had ace king, Pete.
I'm him fold, by the way.
Yeah, I think this hand is just gonna be strong enough to continue.
I'm calling.
Think you'd be better off folding in that long run.
Solver's super tight here. Even Jack ten suited is like half, mixing half folds.
Yeah.
Alright. Little too loosey on the back end here.
Feels like you're making a big mistake here and.
You're calling seven, six suited.
That one calls. Yeah, it's nice to have the stuff that is not, you know, is like not dominant, although he can have a seven suited.
He's betting nine X as well.
Fifty fifty, pre-flop.
With, that's a fifty percent ICM I looked at, cuz I assume we're in the money, but we're big stacks, so there's gonna be some. ICM, maybe thirty-seven is a little more reflective of.
Like.
Yeah, all your suited connectors are calls.
You're at the bottom of your range, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You don't need to defend.
But all your suited connectors you're, you're calling.
Right, and the gappers are half.
Yeah.
Well, now we're in.
Peter. Just, just tell me I'm gonna flop it.
Noodle job.
Yeah, the guy got noodle.
Did you ever bet river?
Yeah, he bet, check, check, turn, big bet river.
Little overpot.
Do we need to bet river so big?
I don't know.
That could be a fun river to check.
Or maybe bet half or whatever.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that big. I could be a mistake. I, sometimes I leave too much value on the table, but I wouldn't have gone that big.
Sixty percent back. So.
Is that, or was it thirty? I can't tell the color.
Sixty.
Okay.
It's round.
Thirty.
Might be thirty-four, might be getting scanned.
Click the size, it'll show you.
Yeah, thirty-four, so it's betting small.
Huh.
Oh, super small. It's, it's basically block betting.
It's hard for him to have anything to call, I guess, like uh.
Yeah.
We block all the good flush combos.
Do you bet this? Any three bets in the house?
I'll bet.
You three bet fold.
It's a good one.
You can three bet this and fold sometimes, yeah.
Eighty percent?
You're a little better in ICM with the ace blocker, right?
I would say somewhere between thirty and sixty, depending on like the ICM like Ken's talking about.
Twenty-seven, actually.
Yeah, I mean, that's also using a chippy V size at a chippy V scenario, so like it. It, it, it's alright, it's not bad.
Can you see the three bit range?
Majority three bet and uh, thirty-seven percent ICM with sixty big blind average.
Yeah, so with chippy V, it's zero three bet, so it gets thirty percent more.
Thirty percent.
I think it's a little ambitious.
Kings, queens.
He's just made his argument for him.
I'm not a big ace rag player.
No.
Yeah, they beat the shit out of my kings every time. That's why it's good to three bet and get it out of the way. This way, like when you. Like, you know, if you just call and you flop an ace, you're, you're playing check, call, check, call, check, call, it's brutal.
From experience, this works a ton. If you make it seven, seven point five, like you just get so many folds.
From your very vast experience, Danny.
My vast experience of three betting ace rag for the last three months.
Thank you.
The head says that, that people fold against three bets here from late position almost fifty percent of the time.
Yeah, maybe a three bet sometimes.
We get scammed again.
You know what to do, two X pot baby.
No, that was a raise. Check rate, we check raised it.
Do we have our bet this turn after the flop goes check, check?
I don't know.
So marginally made.
So the ace should be good for him to bet?
Yeah, but you have it.
But it's a four flush.
And then he checks, so when he checks back, the flop doesn't have many hearts.
Even button, he still has a, a wide variety.
Fifty fifty in that time, you can bet if you want.
Yeah. You can bet.
A little one, one blind type of deal.
Look at him check that turn with ace king.
Yeah, I think he played it pretty weak, cause he has a very easy range bet here, maybe he doesn't know. Like basic. In position when it's monotone, I think he's betting most of the time.
The least with ace king.
At least with ace king, but still.
He didn't make a mistake.
Nobody should be betting more, like most of the time.
He could have just rolled low.
Yeah, but with this hand, he should be checking most of the time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's king without.
Thirty-two percent check, that's still a lot of check. You gotta find some check.
No, yes, no. Sorry. Oh, again. So I would not defend here.
I think we defend the connected one.
Yeah, I think this is a depend.
Yeah, with ICM?
Yeah, well, we got uncovered, so yeah, I think we gotta take a flop, like five, seven, five, fold, five, six, I think you can call.
At the, the ICM machine is gonna say it's good.
Look at his race size.
Yeah, it's still in there. The, the offsuit connectors are down to five, four.
And what are you looking?
I'm looking thirty-seven percent ICM, forty big blind average. Open twenty-eight under the gun, and we're big blind with forty-seven.
It's five, seven folding?
Okay, very, very close, I guess.
I've been playing against this guy all the.
Five, seven is mainly folding, Ken.
I've been playing against his bull seals all the time, and I don't have one note on him. Does that mean he's tight?
It might mean he's solid, like he hasn't done anything noteworthy.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, usually, I mean, I don't even think he plays, I think he folds every time I raise, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I think we see him somewhere final two or three tables.
That's a good turn.
Oh, we're milking him. Uh-oh. Nice.
Perfect execution here.
Now we're, we're bubbly area.
Is that a misclick? That had to been a.
Go past that? Yeah, slight misclick. Instead of two point one, we got excited and clicked twenty.
Why, why did Louis just roll past it?
I called off eleven big blinds with eight deuce the other night.
Two point one.
Twenty-one big blind open, yeah, this is standard, alright, next.
Here, you need to make a preset two point one button. You're typing in two point one every time?
Um, sometimes.
I like a raise here. He has raising?
I like it. I like a raise with the three of clubs here.
Yeah. It's like pretty, pretty cool, I think. Per board, you're in the big blind, you mostly defend by raising.
I think it's good.
Upper dangler to the two.
Gotta call some pairs, you're not, you're not raising all your pairs.
You're calling some, but you're raising some as well.
I think like you're gonna raise them reverse linearly.
Yeah.
All or raise, either's fine.
No folding. Is that, is this us?
Raising any pairs except five some for some reason. Uh, this is us.
What's the, what was the next one? What was the other?
Uh, that was the turn, that's the flat note.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so we raise.
So I didn't think about that.
With the club, we call more.
Cause their continues will consist of a lot of flush draws, so we wanna hit the three of clubs on the turn. And cooler them.
And we do prefer the worst pairs for protection more than. No, you want the club in case you, you want the three of clubs in case that three turns and it's not a club.
You don't want the three of clubs.
No, it's a boat.
You want him to have a.
Right, my point, maybe we're saying the same thing, maybe we're saying the same thing.
You want him to have the three of clubs, Kevin. You want him to have a three of clubs so that the, 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 the tree comes. Well, yeah.
No, you want.
No, you want the three of clubs, so the three you catch is not a club.
No, it's the opposite.
The three, if you catch it, you make the full house, so it doesn't.
Okay, because of the paired board, but most generally, it's the other way around.
Exactly. You want the three in the deck, not in his hand.
Can we look at nines?
A little happier to bet clubs.
Still, it wants to bet without clubs a little bit more. Same pattern.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering, like, it looks like, I thought maybe threes were betting a little bit more for protection than nines, but.
Barely, it's barely.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not really, or just splitting them all pretty good.
I think it's threefold as well, also like with the three of clubs, if a club turns, we're have an easier time playing.
Well, I think if a club turns, we're gonna realize our equity at showdown more often, cause he's gonna check back more off.
Okay.
The threes are relevant versus his range, he only has ace three suited.
A turn now. A turn is also a call.
Look at that terrible river size.
Not milky bed. Has a bluff perfectly.
This is a pair of tens.
Hmm, I mean. This guy is kinda setting himself up for failure here. There's two, there's two options I take here sometimes, and call is not one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm never jamming, like.
This is exactly.
I am jamming.
This is exactly how I left the monster stack. So you beat all his bluffs, why are you jamming? That's why I think, why jam? You beat all his bluffs, you think he's gonna fall?
This is a thin value size.
Yeah, it's a thin value size, so what Danny's expressing is, a lot of the hands in this range. Are milling strength, so like he may have an ace seven here sometimes. He may have like ace five here sometimes that he's trying to get thin value from. Eights, nines, tens are gonna have a hard time when you play check jam on them.
Yeah, it's a thonkey bet, like he shouldn't even really have, use this side, so. Yeah.
Oh, we're on the same page there, Ken.
Yeah, he's supposed to be betting fifty percent or more. Or check. But I'm like, I'm just beating his bluffs, and I'm not trying to get, if he has a queen, he's obviously, like, some people do this with a queen, you're just begging to get called, or kings or aces. I don't know that he's gonna fold jacks or tens, like, I don't see. I don't really see a point in raising if we just, we're getting such a good price to beat all his bluffs, I don't understand raising, honestly.
Yeah, see, that's a, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Ken, but like. When you take it to a next, uh, another level, and you start estimating like. He's making thin value, and you can like, you have enough respect that they're making thin value. Then the next complexity of turning hands that have marginal showdown versus that thin value that's often beat into bluffs. Starts becoming quite a thing.
And we don't even hardly have any queens, cause we're check raising a ton of them on the flop, right? We have sevens, fives and deuces. We have, we have some queens too, cause it's a dry board. I mean, we're not gonna check raise them all, we're gonna check raise a decent amount, like a good amount, right?
It's not a dry board.
Oh yeah, there's two clubs.
Right, it's dry, it's dry and flush drive, sorry, I used the wrong term.
The fact that this guy does this with fucking ace jack, just like, what?
Horrible.
Made it easy for us.
Well, it works, it works on me, cause I would shove here on principle. I'm just telling you. I was gonna say. If he has, and, and they have a queen, this is how I went out of the monster stack last week, exactly in this kinda thing. No, the guy had three sixes. And I'll probably also bet that size with a queen sometimes, cause he's just begging to get called, and then he doesn't know how to bluff. And he was a terrible player, but that's okay, I was too, cause I gave him all my chips.
Are you still in Vegas, Kelly?
No, I just got, I'm going back uh Monday, and we'll play the main event.
Sweet. Good luck.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Easy game?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Georgel Nun, gotta remember that guy's name. Case I meet him before he runs out of money.
Well, I played with a guy in the long core last night. Was a forty-five ABI player who was down three hundred and ten thousand dollars on ACR.
Damn.
He was at the final table. He won it, actually. He won the final table. He was absolutely awful.
Alright, he's climbing out of the hole.
I guess so. Three hundred, and shark scope, three hundred and ten thousand dollars, can you imagine that? Twenty-nine hundred terms.
Yeah, but he makes it back in the cash streets.
I think I would have one bullet and a gun if that was me, I, I couldn't imagine losing three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Must be a, like a business owner or something where he's got a nice cash flow on the side.
Or, or just sick.
Yeah. Yeah.
Board was too bad to polarize a river bet with, so we just.
Why do you bet this turn, Pete?
Uh, flop win, check, check, we have five high. Uh, gut shot six.
Bad gut shot six.
I mean, like, why do you even defend pre-flop?
Well, the board can come in different shapes than king, seven, eight, ten.
Hey, why do you think you need to bet here?
I think on that board, we're gonna have a lot of bets after the flop goes check, check, like he should be betting a king eye board a lot. So he's gonna have some sevens and some eights here.
Yeah, I mean, I like it. I would bet, I would rather have like some six X, some nine X, some jack X first, but I think they're still gonna get in there some. Cause it just can't win, you got five high, right? It's good to bluff the turn, rather wait for the river.
Yeah, we're, like, this is bottom of range.
I think we don't make him fold turn for one bet, so.
Sorry, I would go way bigger than this, though.
I would check and try to bluff river.
Yeah, it's a check.
I don't wanna bet this twice. We have better stuff to bet twice, right, and uh.
So a lot of nines.
Like, name me an auto fold after flop check.
From bad jacks.
On this ten.
Well, Peter, yeah, that's right. Can't, like Ken is saying. Wraps around the, what could be a straight.
Yeah, he's six of spades, he's five of spades.
Nine in your hand.
Ace six even might call, cause it has a gutter and the over.
The, the six four, six is as, like, as thin as it goes, it looks like, the six four. So when you're leading the one point eight, obviously, you're going to bluff on the river, right? Or you don't bother leading that, right?
We're gonna bluff a lot of river cards.
It's very polar in size here. It's not, it's, when, when the machine bets here, it's going five.
Yeah.
Right.
The sizing.
Six. So you're very polar here.
That's kinda my point coming in, yeah.
Almost put bad size, yeah.
Size is wrong, and type is wrong.
Well, because we, Peter recognized that he didn't wanna bomb it, right? So that's why he sized down. So he kinda had the idea, but just check, I think.
I think we have to barrel after on the river, though. With, with the small bluff on the turn. You can't do it as a one and done, I don't think.
Right, you're exactly, cause he's not folding for one point eight. I mean, like you said, there's no auto foods there to speak of, not very many.
The guys are right, Peter. You gotta blast the river if you go get into this rabbit hole.
We kinda blundered that hand.
That's. All the time to think about it.
This is a. I, I, I uh, I'm not a big, well, okay.
It feels like you're lost, you're, you're Zenit.
Other stack sizes, almost ten, ten picks.
Yeah, that's kinda what I'm saying, like, honestly, a three bet size. Is fine, like, you could probably even go a little bit bigger, the only thing you're really worried about is this uh Infintium Sky. Yeah, Infintium Sky, because you're, you're willing to run eights with everyone else at the table since uh. Mabus or whatever his name is, is folded, right?
Yeah, when we three bet a guy who bets under the gun, like the guy Infiniti, Infinitium. Like, he's really not incentivized to play this pot against two uncapped ranges that are very strong.
Uh, my only question would be, why not maybe a little bit larger?
Yeah, I agree. In this scenario, it's.
I would go smaller.
I was thinking four point five, honestly.
Okay, so like the smaller you go, the more you're gonna open up their calling range as like fifteen, sixteen big blinds. Um, and then potent, and then their potential of getting away. So like for this exact scenario, what I was thinking is, if you. Make the size of smid's larger, like six point four, um, it basically just evaporates their calling range, which they shouldn't have a huge calling range regardless. I mean, it's nitpicking, right?
But that convinces us, so that takes out our, our like. Ace, four suited, whatever that we wanna like occasionally bluff here, right?
Right.
Or are we not doing that?
Is this ICM?
It should be.
Like, it's not final table or anything like that.
So everyone thinks playing aids is good here?
Well, what else do you wanna do with it, Louis? You wanna call?
You could fold.
You're not calling it. Calling, it's like.
What's wrong with calling, cause it's.
You're throwing away two big blinds, unless you, what flops do you like that doesn't have an eight in it?
Well, why are you throwing away two big blinds?
I don't think calling is the craziest thing, to be honest.
I think you might have, uh, you're probably, you're just inducing a multi-way pot if you call. I don't know, I'm with the guy with only thirteen behind, I, I don't know, I think you got, I think your razor bold here, really.
You have fifteen effective calling pairs in the range now. Against the raise. It's shop, showing call repairs. Against fifteen effective. Almost all the pairs.
I'm to solve that, like, the, likes the Galen size here. The six point five.
Well, there's that.
We're just telling him, like, you're gonna be. We're just telling him, like, you're gonna be all in.
Exactly.
You can't call.
I have a mental rule, like, small pairs against early position. I don't really raise them. So I don't really like that, but I wouldn't know much else what to do with it.
I guess the, the thing is, okay, so like if he jams fifteen, what are you doing?
I call.
Just, okay, so you're willing to commit fifteen big blinds with pocket eights.
No problem, I just don't wanna raise a EP with them, with pocket eights, precisely. Feel like it's fortune.
But, but I, I think you're folding to Infinitium in, in Finisium Sky. If you raise it to five or six and he jams, you're gonna fold the eights.
Yep.
So when you go to the fifteen against them, you open yourself up when, when Infinitium Sky wakes up with a real hand.
Yeah, it's kind of getting into the territory of like when you're at the final table and you have twelve big blinds and you raise six with the. So you can kind of escape cooler situations behind. I mean, it's akin to that in a way.
Oh, there we go. There's the call. Yes, ten of diamonds.
I like raising. I like checking. I like calling.
I put a somewhat similar.
I'm gonna take a peek.
We have the eight of diamonds.
Lot of asses.
Yeah, so this is like, this is not, it's kind of like whatever, right, Danny? This isn't too bad. So fifteen opens, we have sixty, but we are concerned about seventy behind.
True.
I would, I would turn.
Are you guys check raising sometimes here?
No.
No, not with eights.
With a jack.
Look, Louis, we check raise a lot on a paired board, but we don't check raise everything in our range.
Okay, it's a bit of a thing.
Yeah, it exists, but. Is any, is anybody folding here? I'm folding here a lot.
I'm folding here.
Mm-hmm.
Check bet call.
I understand why he called. He's, I, he, he's got the dummy end of the straight, so it's like an eight's good. He's presuming a jack could be good. I just, uh, I.
We also have the eight of diamonds and we're blocking some of his bluffs too.
Yeah, I agree.
Not blocking the spades.
It's a, it's a double flush draw board where he's still betting if he has a jack in his hand here a lot. Right? I still think he has a reasonable amount of incomplete in hands here.
I, I think he just ran into massive equity realizations if he pulls the trigger on the river. Like, if, if a deuce of diamonds or if a deuce of hearts comes on the river, any jams, are you calling?
That's a tough spot.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I see folding.
What does the machine do on the turn? Because I'm folding this turn a lot.
Folding.
I, I was gonna say the machine's probably folding, I would think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, what does it do? Uh, what does it do if you're unblocking diamonds? So if you have heart, heart club, just since we're here.
That's probably where the thirteen percent calling comes from.
Right, yeah. Doesn't really matter.
Hearts, gloves, and the much.
All's blessed.
Yeah, that's actually.
That's weird.
Well, no, you wanna block the value completing.
Yeah, that's right. You're right, you're right, you're right, Pete. I was thinking backwards.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
On the river, we can go the other way. On the river, we want it.
Yeah, if he has ace check of, if he has ace check of spades here, like, you're already like thirty-five, forty percent to win the hand with one card to go. Oh, good check. Uh, unfortunate, he checks back, but I do like the check. You know what? I wonder if it docks. Because it, it completes a bunch of equity.
It does.
Yeah, it completes a bunch. Yeah, it makes sense, actually. Makes sense, actually, because it completes just a mountain of equity. Like, the straights get there and you just have, you, you just have like the nuts, basically.
And so many of the things he has to call you with check behind there. I mean, he, he, he could check, he could check.
Hence Kings. Yeah, exactly.
And he even, he could even check behind a nine there.
I'm not sure about this one. I've called Queen seven, but Queen seven.
Uh, so just, he's paying four point seven four to win. The what, twelve or so? Thirty-three percent, I mean.
Thirty-seven.
The button.
You usually have forty percent.
What are you ahead of with your Queen seven, Pete?
Well, he's shoving, he's shoving ten, nine suited, right? He's shoving.
He should be. He should be.
Like, with five big blinds, he's gonna be shoving worse queens.
Should be. I would agree. Yeah, I mean, game blouse is, is kind of reggy, um. So he, he's probably finding what he should. I don't know. I, I, uh, I think it's close.
You call or you fold?
I know these are spots that you're probably supposed to call, but when I get deep in tournaments, I just don't bleed chips out here. I fold.
I would fold as well. I think it's a pair to one.
Let's take.
Yeah, yeah, a little, yeah. I would, I would have thought you're supposed to call, but actually it is quite a bit wide. Oh, yeah, this is, uh, this is ten big blinds, so you gotta go, you gotta go shallow or my man.
I could dump to five.
Doesn't matter.
Ooh, Queen eight. Let's go.
Let's go.
This is it, right?
Yeah.
So basically, you got, you got dealt like the one combo that's like very, very, very difficult to deal with, is what I'm seeing here. But, you know, sure. Um, I'm folding here. Raise is good. Chi, I'm checking here, check.
That's good, yeah.
Is this not a spot where you bet big?
Yeah.
It polarizes, you're right, Louis, but when you bet big, you also have a lot of checks, which would be this.
How would you?
How would you do what?
How would you play pocket nine?
How would you play king, queen?
I would bet bigger with pocket nines. I mean, he's only got nineteen big blinds, so I'm, I'm betting like three or something.
Okay, the machine says, uh, check.
I think king eight, the bets will start to filter in, and the lower you get, the more you'll bet.
Pocket nines actually just goes bananas.
Yeah, king eight, a little, king seven, a little more, king six, a little more, still mainly checking them all.
I, I, I knew this was gonna be like that, so I thought all the other nines. We're gonna pick from it, but tell you what, it's offsuit nines. It's not suited nines.
Yeah, that's the rainbow characteristic there. So everything is basically got backdoor that you're trying to protect. Um, with the exception of like that little bit of activation you see there, which I'm guessing is from diamonds.
So I can scan, but not with the backdoor flush.
King nine has very few better hands that it will make fold, and then if you do get check raised, you're wasting your equity, kind of.
Yeah, part of the problem with betting a king here is because it's a two, three, four board, you're never gonna get any ace to hold.
Yeah, that is a problem, Pete.
But you get better kings, right?
Better than king nine? There aren't a lot of them because he starts three betting some of them.
Okay, maybe.
Right. It's a, it's a thin range that is better and will fold.
You're bleeding, Pete.
Why don't we got to?
It is my turn to lose.
It is my turn to. They show you a little six tree.
Why do we not, what? Scotty?
He was thinking jam.
I was thinking jam pre-flop.
You don't jam pre-flop because of exactly what happened there. He's not gonna be able to put his six, three suited in if he's appropriately polarizing.
Peters, you value that this river.
What happened on flop turn? It was a little small demon.
That.
That small seems good, call seems good. Check, check.
I like value, I think.
Yeah.
So we.
What's he gonna call?
Pocket tens, pocket tens, um. He might hero with the ace of spades.
Might bluff us with the ace of spades, though.
I buy it.
Did we, did we, um, did we check the turn flop and then he bet the turn?
And we called it. That flop, he bet flop, he called. And then he, uh, he checked turn.
Okay, alright, uh, so it's saying check the river.
It's saying check the river, but it's also saying bet the turn.
Oh, he didn't dunk. We, okay, I see.
It, well, I mean, thirty-seven percent of the time is quite a bit of checking, so it's, it's definitely reasonable.
Yeah, but it's suit majority bet all the time.
Yep.
Um, just question, so if you made it the six of, let's say, diamonds on the river, are you then going for value?
Yep.
I would venture to say every time. What do you say?
I think so. I thought we were gonna still go with even the flush completing. Not really. Look at that.
Queen jack does it.
Yeah. Not really, boys.
Ace jack doesn't do it, queen jack does.
But, you know, in practice, they don't have those many traps as they.
Oh, wait, we are, we are. You were looking at the wrong node. Okay, never mind. He was looking at the wrong node. Yeah, this makes sense, okay. I was a little surprised, to be, to be honest.
The flush completing is the other bad element there.
And he had ace five, which is probably a reasonable bluff catch.
He could have bluff caught. Catch big.
Right, like, yeah, yeah, not too big.
Catch more than half, half the pot.
Eh, it's kind of dicey, right?
Yeah.
Um, I like checking in the sandwich.
Yeah.
Okay, say this guy bets, this guy falls, can we check raise?
No, because he bet into two players.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe you can, Louis. I don't know the answer, but I would, I don't play check the raise there.
When you check raise, like, you don't get better hands to fold.
Better hands, no. Well, I mean, maybe little pairs you do, Pete, if he's over.
Yeah, you get two threes and fours to spoil, but that's really narrow. Like, I don't even know that he's flattening all of those.
Mm-hmm.
Pre-flop.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree. Um, I, this is a spot I would be more, okay, this is why I would, I like clicking more here.
I would click this.
Because this is, this is now, and you've, you've let the devil in and he's here to stay.
Yeah, five and a half or six is my cutoff. Like, if it's like around five and a half or six, I'll call. If it's less than that, I click it. For honesty, I would just jam and look weaker. So I'm not folding. I'll just jam.
Ace King off probably jams decent amount here in theory.
Um, I, okay, I was gonna say, I kind of like the limp here. I know this region does. I still am not very comfortable playing these type of spots post-flop, though. For reasons like this.
Well, he only bet, he bets small on the river.
Yeah, about one chip.
Yeah, I'm just saying there, he, he didn't make it difficult for you to navigate, but it gets very difficult to navigate sometimes.
Did you limp here again or?
Uh, he raised. He raised this time.
He raised.
Ie, caramba, good bluff catch.
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, this is good.
You, I think you could bet maybe sometimes on the flop, but if you check, this is definitely the way to play the hand.
What is this? Yeah, just put him in. Flattening off his seven big blind stack. Good folds. Uh, yeah, I would have called. What happened? How did we get there?
He bet on the turn, we called him, and then the river comes in and we, we have.
Are we not supposed to save after?
No, so you're polarized here, which is gonna make you big bet and then check a lot. And I would guess ace king of hearts is a. Very solid check here.
Yeah.
Ace King is the hand I wanna bet the least for the same reason, like, it doesn't get better to fold here.
Yeah.
What do you, you check if you have a dive in your head, right?
So this is kind of weird. It's an eight, five, four.
Should be the big blinds wheelhouse.
What am I, what am I missing here?
I don't know.
No, something's weird. Look, it's fifty percent check.
That's not, that's not the same range. There we go.
Thing is, you get called by worse aces, so especially a king, a queen, you can bet a little bit. Maybe, maybe it's Jack with the idea that you're betting with the intention, like.
And then you. How much, how much ace queen he has? How much? Queen is Jack, ace ten, really. He should be three betting those.
Look at these suited ones.
We get the value bet, ace, king, ace, queen, ace, jack is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Louis, roll over the suited one.
Yeah.
Ace King.
How do you, uh, how do you?
Combo.
Big one of bits.
The dimes are more resilient, so they could check a little better.
And, and the spades don't wanna be blocked off, the spades want their equity.
So how do you handle a check raise? Because you're just asking it to get check raised when you bet this.
I think you call.
Another call.
Call once and then you, you check the turn.
Well, that's why you picked the fifty-five or the eighty-three percent sizing here.
I'll, I'll polarize and you check raise a lot less.
Fair, fair, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm out now.
Should you not be betting this river?
And sixes.
Dude, he's got sixes, he's got flushes. What are you trying to, you trying to pu- push him off a chop?
Get called by two pair or so.
How many sets does he have? We opened the button.
Didn't big blind bet turn? He clicked so fast, like, I don't even notice what's going on half the time.
He bet the turn, we called.
It is not going that fast, okay?
Then he checked, then he checked river.
Ten tables at the same time, it's not my.
Well, I play two tables.
This is not going fast at all.
Louis, come on, man. It's, it's been, it's been echoed for a year now.
You guys are just talking shit, as usual. Matt Affleck said you go too fast.
That's when we're looking at the sims.
But yeah, like, I don't know. I think this is a pretty marginal bet for value here. Um, you know, we chop a lot, we lose to a six that calls, we, you know, get thin value from some two parents.
Okay, so you got, you guys don't like betting this river?
I'm never betting that.
I think, I, I, I don't think betting's.
Diamonds come in too, like, it's, Jesus.
Check the nuts on the turn.
I have a diamond, the ace of diamond.
Right? Did, he didn't bet the turn, right?
He did bet the turn.
Oh, he did, okay.
Bet turn, check river.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. When check, check on the flop.
He bet a quick turn.
I would see that there.
Uh, I like seat betting, alright. I don't think it's bad. It's, it's resilient enough to, uh, whoa, that was interesting. What was that river action?
Beatling, check, check.
I don't know, it was a blur.
So like he missed a two, three bet and then just.
Well, does it ever check on the flop? I, I'm not playing check here on the flop, and if I'm playing check on the, if it does play check on the flop, does it ever play check on the turn?
Yeah, I mean, it's just three X potting, so.
I thought checking flop with king, queen much either, honestly. Especially without any of the suits, I think we can start betting. A lot of draws, you get value from.
Think it's a range bet.
A range bet. It is a range, it is a range bet.
Maybe not. All right, the pair born normally in position, the king.
It's a combo. I'm sorry, it's a combo range bet.
Forty percent checking.
Yeah.
But not this, but not our hand.
Yeah, not this hand.
This hand is betting, always betting. The hand is betting, always betting.
Well, it's ba- it's honestly, it's the best king that you're flattening, because.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
Could this be the final table, Peter?
Uh, we do play with this bore seals guy that Kelly was talking about for a long time, so we're getting close.
Give him a little raise, take it down. Give him a little raise.
Get it?
Um, big bet, do we want a big bet? I think big bet's probably okayish here.
I think it's great.
Uh, I'm going to fold here, probably.
Yeah, oh.
What would you do with ace five stood?
Yeah, I would take a look at their hut, is what I would do.
This is an easy fold, right?
This is like, I think the floor of the calling range, depending on like how ICM intensive we are here, like the offsuit dates I think are.
Why do you call here? It's Jack ten off, it's off suit tens. This is final table, right, or final table bubble?
Uh, this is close, we haven't, we're, we're, we're still more than three tables out.
Yeah, yeah, so I would.
You're gonna scream at me when we have a hand at three tables that I didn't get value for. It hasn't happened yet, so.
So we're, we're over. Over three tables out. Well, yeah, you you can look at the, look at the, look at the math machine.
Eighteen players probably.
I might call this, it's not. Why is everyone all of a sudden calling like a chippy V machine on an ICM point?
Well, you can look up a ICM point on a, on the chippy V machine, if you know what I mean. There you go.
It doesn't answer my question.
Welcome to, welcome to the promised land, three tables.
Said it's more than three tables, so the twenty five percent left. Yeah, I don't believe that.
Okay, click it on three tables and we'll take a look.
You don't believe that Peter knows what stage of the tournament he's in?
Yeah.
Oh, Louis, just.
When we make the nut flush and I don't bet it, that's when we're three tables and you can scream.
Okay, okay.
I've been waiting for that one for the last hour and a half.
So, so Peter has a reference point, do you have any retort to that, Louis?
Yeah, 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 there's ten, ten hands left in the tournament.
Peter, when we get to that hand, we'll be going so slow.
Ten hands left in the tournament, he's looking, he's got ten hands left.
Yeah.
You're gonna let that one linger.
So I, sure, I mean, no problem.
Did we miss the ace queen of, or the ace jack of spades?
Uh, what kind of chip distribution are we looking at?
Twenty, I can, here, don't worry.
He's got us covered, fold.
So we got a mystery to solve a Scooby Doo B, I got you.
Hey, mystery man.
I'm gonna solve the mystery.
He has us covered, fold.
Mad noodles.
Thirty, two short stack ten ten.
Mad noodles. So do you see crystal five, 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 five at the table?
Uh, nope.
This is not the final table.
Fold.
Great. Do you defend jacket on the final two?
Final two, uh.
Ooh, final two, maybe not. Right, like, I'm I'm defending.
Two minutes ago, everyone was like, oh, I'm calling here.
So.
Because it's more than three tables.
Spark plug finished eighteenth, and you are looking at a six handed table, so you are at least three tables out. At the very bare minimum.
So you guys are ending this at final three tables, I think.
This guy's a cutoff, I mean, I I I am, I'm defending.
Versus the, versus the cutoff, I'm kind of with Kelly.
You guys are defending, maybe I'm wrong.
Actually, he's, yeah, he's cut off, yeah, I, yeah, I am. Maybe wrong, but I do.
You gotta be, you gotta be deeper than fifteen in the biggie, the biggie smalls.
We're at thirty one, so twenty six is, hold on.
There's a thirty three, twenty seven, a little higher up. Five, six or seven up, yeah, there.
Yeah, that's close.
So, yeah, this will be in the neighborhood of things, this will be a little bit tighter, it looks like, but it'll be close.
Oh.
You actually raise it sometimes. Terrible, but uh, but yeah, like offsuit eights is what I was kind of thinking.
So, kind of when we do range construction work, defending against the uh, the button, you're gonna be offsuit fives, cutoffs, offsuit sixes, hijacks, offsuit sevens, and low jack and earlier offsuit eights. And then, um, as you apply some ICM, it's gonna push it up a little bit, so Jackie the floor. But you're two hips tighter than chippy D here.
Yeah, slightly change, you can't figure, yeah.
Well, you, you doubled and tripled the guy's race stack and you took chips away from you, so you only have twenty five effective now, which it's, it's close, like I, I'm definitely with you, it's not like a slam dunk, let's pile all of our chips in.
Yeah, I kind of think, I kind of think in the way, rather than getting real complicated, I just think in a way, can I flop a straight? In that hand, you can flop.
That's a good simplification.
And.
Just for posterity sake, why don't you look at final two tables to see if we find something, uh, if it it's still kind of floating around that ballpark?
No, I think final two tables, it might get.
Well, we'll see. I'm kind of, I'm, so twenty three is a little shallow. I mean, any, honestly, any of these, it really doesn't matter, just, we're kind of just testing, testing the waters.
Go up higher where we can get, find some of the.
Oh wait, you're four handed right now, yeah, there you go.
How much is it?
Six.
Six handed. There you go.
So there's a thirty seven, a twenty four, twenty five, twenty three is not too bad, although.
We push up higher because, because that's how we're gonna find those thirties.
Sort by big blind and go to thirty.
Here we go.
Yeah, there's a good, couple good ones, there's a fifty from the button, there's a forty five from the button, that's a really good one, although the average is.
Cut off raise.
Yeah, the, these table averages are quite a bit more, but it doesn't really matter too much.
This one's perfect.
Well, almost all of them are playing. Alright, probably. Of those two tables, I probably would have folded this at two tables.
But it's break even, is what it is.
Ooh, we get a call. I do like the lead after the check, check.
Maybe it should build a bit bigger bet if we.
Yeah, I think we're gonna, we're gonna bet the river, we're gonna follow through, this is a good size, get a call.
Now, usually when, um, we're, we're out of position and it goes check, check, and if we bet, when the nuts does not change, the six didn't change anything, we get to bet large.
Okay, what do you mean, I mean, five, four.
Or five, right?
Five, there is a very obvious straight.
Six is just a card that's good for our range.
Five, four is not a large part of his range.
This is a big, but this is a big blind defense range.
Yeah, we also have like three, six suited, right, and queen six, two six, right, we have, we have a lot of two pairs, we also have a lot of beans here now.
I think we're more polar here. Two flush draws, um, gotta put a lot of pressure on, like, anything he's got that's of any value. Okay. What do you guys think of this? Cause this is a good question, I'm in this spot a lot. So if you're gonna go polar, you're gonna say like three quarters pot, something like that, right?
Okay, yeah.
Then, if you get called, then you can shut down on the river, right?
It's not going polar.
But if you go small, you have to follow up on. If, unless you get it terrible.
I think it really, I think it's pretty binary with the, the runout, so like there's some runouts where you're just like, well, I'm done, and then there's.
Yeah, yeah, like an ace, you know, like or something like that, you're probably gonna shut down, but, yeah, so.
But Jack eight does bet, bet small, look at that.
Yeah, so this is a complicated range, it's mixing very hard all across.
It does, it does have some polar, but not with this hand.
Yeah, so he's, uh, so I was listening, the reason I'm asking is because I was watching a Jonathan little webinar the other day, and uh, he's going polar on this kind of board a lot.
Yeah, that's where I'm getting it from, too.
And I kind of bet small, I'm ti- I, I tend to bet small like Peter did here. And uh, then try to follow through on the river, but I think you can do it both ways, can't you?
This is just the card that's good for our range, so I'm probably gonna bet a lot of cards, eight and under here on the river, even if the flush completes.
Yeah. Well, I looked at this in a very narrow way, I'm like, five, four is going really big, so I think when we make strong hands, we have strong draws. In my mind, we go big, but we're just so, I guess our rate, did they check flop?
They checked flop.
So maybe that has something to do with it, that our range is just so wide, we have to have some small bets.
Yep.
Is that why?
Yeah, it's wide verse, wide range versus wide range on a checked flop. Where we get a turn card that is a key card for our range.
Yeah, cause in this spot, you have very little equity, you're right, I mean, you got very little equity, I mean, it's like, he's checking back up. Yeah.
This is, this is a card I'm gonna follow through with.
Yeah, I think you gotta, I think you gotta go here, right?
Yeah.
Any card under nine. The flushes don't complete and you just really interact well with this, I, so the only question I have is like, what size do you go now? Pot, like, I was gonna say, I do want to polarize, I don't want to go small, small, I think I want to go like five or six pots good, probably.
No over bet, though.
Six.
Yeah, this is, this is, okay, oh, you're, you're, what is this, man? Dude, this is, uh.
When your bluff gets raised, it's an easy fold.
Well, pause a second, pause a second, what is he doing that with that makes any sort of sense?
This is why I don't have any notes on him, maybe.
Like, this is.
Strange.
This is silly, like, I would, I don't know, man, I punt my chips off in these spots sometimes.
Yeah.
Like, if you want to induce me to do something silly, do this.
Five big pots I lost were all limp pots. So that's not gonna happen.
Pocket sixes or sevens, as, as E money said, right, so.
Did he have three sevens?
Well, who knows?
Right, so like, if he had, if he had a set of sixes, do you think he's raising your one point two big blind bet or whatever you made on the turn? Like, what's his plan to get the chips in?
Wait for a black river.
Okay, so, yeah, that.
If he, if he recognizes that the six is a card that we're going to largely range back, and he hits the six, like, how are we gonna continue?
I mean, I guess he could have four or five suited, right?
Yeah, it just gets into those strange territory of like this super leveling war.
A little weird.
Do you think he's. Do you think he's balanced with bluffs and value here on this river?
No, I, no. No, I think it's asymmetrically full of BS is what I think it is. Cause it, it just makes no sense.
He has a, he has a busted flush draw here a lot.
I think the guy's got like nine, ten of hearts or something.
But he's just gonna click it?
I mean, what else is he gonna, what, I, like, what, what makes sense that he's doing this with? I guess it could be pocket sevens, it could be pocket sevens, okay, I would buy pocket sevens.
Yeah.
How about king ten of diamonds, that checks the flop to try and realize equity, turns the draw and calls our small bet at the price, and then bluffs us on the river.
Okay, I could buy that too, maybe.
Yeah.
But he gives you a price that's like. You're not folding any of your value.
I mean, honestly, though, if you've got pocket sevens here, and a guy leads into you from the.
Jam, right, why aren't you gonna jam?
You're either gonna jam, or, I mean, I'm not really loving it, you know, I mean, you, you're beat by four or five.
We've lost our controller. Lunch break has commenced.
Lunch break, I just got back from, from lunch break, whatever.
My internet went down here a little bit ago.
No, no, I'm right here.
Okay.
I don't know, it's crazy.
Think we're moving on from this spot.
Yeah. Maybe that's why I don't have notes on that guy. I don't know.
No thin value on the river, I assume.
He's on third, that's okay, the spice, third set is okay, or should we be going?
Paired board?
And the flush comes in.
Flush, uh. We have like, pretty bad ten, I don't know, we can probably go bigger, I don't know, small seems good, too.
Right, we are starting to, to get down to three tables here or four tables, so.
Yeah.
We are getting pretty, we are getting a little more cautious by nature now.
With this hand.
Easy jam.
Cautious.
Easy jam.
Easy call.
Oh.
Jam.
I would jam pre, uh.
In ICM? Yeah, I don't know.
With this guy here and my, possibly other guys, um, I don't know.
It's not F, it's not FT, right?
We are, we're three or four tables left here, this is pretty tough.
Yes, so what do you mean, Louis?
I would not jam.
What are you talking about the other guys for?
This one is short, there could be another short guy on the other table.
Yeah, why does this matter with three tables left?
You don't want to go bust for them. It just leaves like every three spots, there's a pay jump.
Yeah. Solver looks to mix, call and, and call and click, you can make it five.
Why don't we just jump right back up?
In this exact scenario, what is your shabby grudge from the small blind this deep? Any ace? The previous hand.
Blind versus blind? Probably all aces, kings down to king nine.
Oh. Of certain, certain.
Yeah. Maybe king seven suited, so.
Any pair or not, twos, deuces.
Twos and threes I fold in ICM. Wars plus.
So this is it, right?
Uh, is this final table? I don't, can't imagine it is. This is the hand, alright, I'm going to the bathroom, you guys can scream at me about this one, that's.
And why would you do that?
Or you made those queens happy.
So it's like a three bet pot, so he connects really well with the king. Yeah, I think, I think we bet small here. We almost always, always have something here, so, yeah. Yeah, I think we should bet about three here. I don't understand why you check three streets here. Pretty big blunder. I like this stall.
I like it working.
I don't like this defend.
What do you want to do? Just fold?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Alright, so the ace jack of spades went by.
Yeah.
Alright. Yeah, we're final two.
No big.
Yeah.
So I would just go all in here.
No way. He iso'd last time. This is like our, our trap.
You think you got trapped at this tag though?
Yes.
You don't?
It's probably just this one. And like.
Let's take a look at this and stuff, but yeah.
Yeah, aces and kings are better than ace king.
Four-handed final table. Fourteen bigs.
We're four-handed?
Four-handed final table, fourteen bigs.
Is it final or final two?
Thirty, final table.
Sixty.
Okay.
Yeah, you're down to four.
Uh, huh. Yeah, well, it could be four and five, cause ACR is eight-handed final table.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Oh, this is a final table hand. There's not much time left in life.
I see, I see. Uh, I found a relatively good one. Yeah, okay, just jam. I thought it was final two tables. I would be more inclined to trap final two tables. Jam's good. Jammer two and a half X with the sliver of.
Two from the bottom. We have fifteen, they have twenty-five.
This one's different, cause there's a five stack though, like we're the short stack, right?
Yeah.
But I found a good one, um.
There is a sliver of limp.
Yeah, yeah.
Mind that sliver, Louis.
Well, there's the short stack, it makes sense. We're not really gonna do much trapping.
One more down. There you go.
Try that one.
Yeah, it's just not limping, it's just raising or jamming.
Yeah.
We have no limp range notably.
Yeah.
I didn't realize we were FT, sorry. Uh, let me look at two tables out of curiosity and find one.
Alright.
Gotta go here, right?
Did we limp that?
We're the big blind.
Oh, we're the big.
Jam small blinds.
Cool, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's.
Buddy, we're good, right?
No, we're gonna die, but we're ha- I mean, what happened?
Look at this, Todd, you're happy right now.
I know, this is really looking good. Twelve percent, he's only got twelve percent. Alright, well played.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's how Peter made one thousand six hundred bucks with a free ticket.
Congrats.
Great job.
Thanks to grips and poker coaching for the, uh, the stuff and the way we go.
It's been a true pleasure.
Thanks, Louis.